All right, we're going to call together, meeting to order for the work session for the Coaches County Board of Supervisors. We're meeting in the Executive Conference Room in Bisbee, Arizona. Pursuant to ARS 38431.02H, public will have physical access to the meeting room 15 minutes prior to the start of the meeting. Any item on this agenda is open for discussion. Members of the Coaches County Board of Supervisors will attend either in person or via Microsoft Teams. Members of the public may also attend via Microsoft Teams or the mobile app. Work sessions are a time for county staff to inform and discuss agenda items with the Board of Supervisors, and public comments will not be taken. We'll begin with a roll call vote, District One. Mr. Crosby is absent. District Two?
Gomez is here.
Ms. Gomez is on Teams. And District Three, Antonori, is present and in person. All right, so begin with introductions. Let's start for the people online.
Okay, I'm Christine McLaughlin. I'm with Development Services. I'm the interim Director and Planning Manager.
Joe Casey, interim deputy county administrator.
Jackie Watkins, Director of Engineering and Natural Resources, the county engineer.
Melissa Wright, Deputy Clerk of the Board.
Karen Gilman, interim county administrator.
All right, Frank Antonori, Kathleen Gomez. All right.
Crosby is here.
Oh, Crosby's here. So have the record now reflect Mr. Crosby is present via Microsoft Teams. All right, so, okay, so, item number one, so this is a follow-up to a meeting we had a couple of weeks ago with the folks from Taca, explaining some of the concerns in the area over there that they're dealing with. One was the road and the damage being caused by what is perceived to be oversized vehicles or overweight vehicles versus what is the weight limit for the road. One was the biomass on top of the hill there that that guy is piling up. The other was water related to both, I forgot the property that's next to...
Either side of Mr. Durham's.
Yeah, Mr. Durham's property, right? So one of it was George Scott related, and the other one was the property on the top of the hill related. So the hydrology there, and what's going to be dealt with with that. I know you guys went out there and took a look at it and whatnot, so I'm interested to hear what the outcome of that was. So I guess we'll begin. Want to start, George?
Yeah.
All right.
Take it. So up here on the agenda, we broke it down into the six different areas of concern to make sure that we addressed each one of the concerns, whether it was on Mr. Scott's property or the Sierra Mining property, and then, like you said, the biomass, the weight limit, and then the zoning. And so we want to make sure we addressed each of those issues as we go on the presentation. And so go between Christine and then over to Jackie once Christine finishes the Development Services side of it.
Okay.
All right. And yeah, we went out there immediately following that following a week after the work session, we met with the folks on both sides of the property, Mr. Scott, Mr. Reisch, I got his name wrong.
Kevin Rice.
And then the Sierra Mining. And we went in there and took a look at the property to make sure that the analysis that we were doing was accurate.
Did they let you on the property?
Yes, they did.
Oh, they did?
Yeah.
Okay.
Fluid drone, the Development Services team flew a drone around there to get a better view of everything, to analyze it. And we also did a walk around, and then we walked over the property on Mr. Scott's property as well.
Okay.
And then we'll get each of the... Okay, we're breaking it down as what the concern is, what the analysis is, and then what the response is.
Okay. So I will start the discussion with land use concerns, and then I'll hand it over to Jackie to discuss engineering and environmental concerns. The first item, ask the county to clarify the existence of permits or building licenses in relation to zoning. The second item is related to whether or not a mining exemption exists on the property. So before I get to either of these items, I'd like to go back a bit to the original request before the county, which was a rezoning request to have the industry to accommodate a recycling center. Every zoning district in the county has permitted uses and special uses. In the case of rural zoning, which is the current zoning of the property, a recycling center is not a permitted use, but it would be allowed by special use. It is a permitted use in heavy industry. This was the original request by Shane Madsen, and as I mentioned on this slide, their request was withdrawn in April of that year, in 2024. I also include a definition of a recycling center on this slide, and given that withdrawal, that specific use for a recycling center was not permitted. So let's go back to where we are today. The county does not issue business licenses. That's typically done by cities. It's not mandated by the state. We do not have any current Development Services permits for the property. Permits from my department are typically required for new buildings, additions, significant renovations or additions, repairs. The county also has right-of-way permits and floodplain use permits. These are considered engineering permits, which we'll discuss later in the presentation.
Excuse me, just, I'm sorry. Okay, what page are you on? I'm just trying to maneuver here.
Page six.
Are you on slide six? Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Got you.
And on page... Yeah. Okay. And can she see the president?
Yeah, I can now. I got it now.
Okay, good. In Arizona, the regulation of sand and gravel mining operations involves compliance with various environmental safety standards enforced by multiple state agencies. Largely, these regulations fall under the Department of Environmental Quality. The state preempts county authority in this domain. The preemption is rooted in the state's interest in maintaining consistent and uniform standards for mining activities across all jurisdictions. This preemption can be found in ARS 11812. I personally visited the site on March 20th of this year. On the next few slides, I'll discuss my impression of the So first impression, it did appear like it could be either a sand and gravel or a burrow pit. These uses are similar, but only sand and gravel is considered mining. I include the definition and purpose of each on this slide. One of the key differences is the use of the product. Borrow pits in general are just more limited. This slide, I discuss classifications. As I mentioned before, sand and gravel is state-regulated. Borrow pits by definition are generally unregulated. They are not included in our zoning regulations.
Let me ask you a question. So any property owner could basically excavate in an RU, right? We're talking RU?
In any.
In any zoning?
As long as it's a burrow pit.
You could dig a, like if I wanted to dig a one-acre pond on my property, I could just dig a...
You'd probably need a floodplain use permit.
Oh, okay, okay. I've got something, but I mean, if I dig a hole...
Then that would be subject to...
And then it just fills with water? I'd need a floodplain permit?
Yeah, for a structure, if you were...
No, not a structure. I'm just going to dig a burrow pit and let it fill with water.
Right. For a pool?
No, for a pool.
You'd need a Development Services permit for a burrow.
No, 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 not for a pool. I'm just saying, I just find that interesting that somebody, anybody can go dig a big hole in their property, it's not regulated.
By Development Services.
By anybody.
But it could be subject to a floodplain use permit, if you're altering the floodplain.
If it fills up with water, so I guess.
And you have to swap your rights, and you have to get a permit from ADWR.
Yeah.
Yeah, I got you, but it just seems that the fact that somebody could dig a hole up to 60 acres and not be regulated is a lot. That's a big hole. As long as you claim it's being used for fill somewhere, or you're using it, you know, for a non-commercial purpose. I mean, God, that's absolutely...
He raised his hand.
Their property.
I got you, but holy cow.
I just have a question. So how would you know if someone dug a hole or not? Just by having a drone go over the landscape, and then you'd see a hole?
Possibly.
We're complaint-driven?
Yeah.
So the only way that these guys find out is if somebody files a complaint, and then they go investigate it. So it would have to be somebody notifying the county that there's a guy digging a big hole.
Yeah.
No.
Right. Well, and I'll say, you know, sand and gravel tend to be much larger operations.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I mean, they started about 10 acres and can be really, really large, and they typically include some element of processing.
So you saw, I guess, you saw a gravel pit?
We saw a pit.
And you saw...
I saw materials. I saw materials.
Do they have a crusher out there?
I did not observe any processing or any crushing.
Okay, all right. Okay, cool. I'm just trying to get an idea of the skill.
Correct. And like I just said, I didn't see any processing, any crushing or screening going on on that day. Regulatory compliance, sand and gravel require state permits. Citizens can always report suspected mining operation to the state mining inspector. They can report environmental concerns to ADEQ. Both agencies will send somebody out to inspect. As an independent constitutional officer, the state mine inspector operates autonomously within the executive branch of the state government. If the burrow pit were to take on a larger-scale commercial operation or processing, then these state permits would be required. Okay, I think, yeah, okay. So this again is asking for clarification about the exemption. The county doesn't have a formal exemption form like we do for agricultural exemption, but it's my understanding that that's likely a burrow pit. And I understand that the mining inspector did go out and have a similar impression. If it's a burrow pit, it doesn't fall under zoning or the mining exemption.
So who makes that call? I mean, so what stops, so what stops a guy from building gravel pit, extracting gravel, and then saying, oh, it's just a burrow pit?
He has the heavy equipment.
So, well, he's got the bulldozer, he's got...
The sifters, the crushers, the processing equipment.
Okay.
If you're in a wash. But there is a burrow pit off of 191 that's active today that started a few months ago with a solar farm that is up off of Drenning Road, and it's just south of Sunzona.
And they're just pulling material out there to fill somewhere?
Yeah, it's the hill. You can see it from the highway, and they're taking off a lot of that, and there's terrific...
Yeah, not very permits for that. Wow, okay.
Yeah. Okay, the biomass file. I'm going to hand this over to Jackie, but first, let me clarify again, we don't have in Development Services a permit for mulch. The property owner has indicated that he wishes to spread the mulch on the site, which would be allowed.
You guys can't talk. I hate that. I hate to stand up.
This is very misleading.
Bite your tongues. We'll set up a time for you guys to come in and talk.
This is the mulch, and mulch is, so I went out there first. Joaquin and I went out there. It was December, and we went outside. And so this is mulch, and mulch is used to restore property. You know, on the roads, in the roads, we use typically five tons, four to five tons an acre, that you spread on anything that's disturbed on the side of the road, and that's typical what we do. EPA uses it four to five, five to 10 tons for land restoration. Like the mines around here, they're using mulch to restore the land. So mulch, you can buy mulch at Walmart, you can buy it from the city of Sierra Vista, you know, they do mulch with, they create compost and mulch, and you can buy it in both like this.
So he bringing this in from Pima County, I guess it's...
Someplace.
Yeah, and so the concern was fire, right, spontaneous combustion. So evidently, this happened with the facility that was in Pima County, and it caught on fire.
And that would be compost, not mulch.
Oh, well.
And you have to have moisture in the compost to get it to combust. So this has been there for a few months.
I mean, is there any risk of it?
Homeowners make compost.
Yeah, I do too. I got manure composting on my property, but I mean, what about the potential for fire? Evidently, that's where, he had similar setup in Pima County, had a fire.
I...
Yeah.
I mean, it is mulch, you know. I went out and I looked at it, you can see the height, the limbs and stuff, the wood, and he says he's going to spread it around the property to store the property at some...
Okay.
And then the other concern is the water flowing from the Sierra Mining property and all directions to the landscape. So this is, this is the pit. This is material pit. This is in 2010. This is from a satellite image. You can see that they had, you know, all the conveyor belts and stuff and crushing, and this is all the activity. You can see the footprint of the land, the parcel of the land that was cleared back in 2010, and it's comparable to the footprint of the parcel today. There's no additional clearing of land that has happened since 2010. These are the contour lines for, in 2020, they used United States Geological Survey, flew LiDAR on the county, and they created two-foot contour maps. So these are the two-foot contour maps, and these are on our website, meaning anyone can get to these on our GIS maps. These three parcels here are Mr. Durham's. This is Mayberry's. The gravel pit is this one. These here are Sierra Mining. The location of ravine number one, this is the ravine number one that is east of Mr. Durham's house. This is Mr. Durham's house right there. He lives here. Is a ravine on the west side of his property. Then there's these two ravines on the east side of his property. This ravine here cuts through just the very northwest corner of the Sierra Mining property, but it starts back up over here on state lease land. This ravine here...
Can you say the number for ravine number? I'm not sure people can see your cursor, so...
Oh, they should.
They can?
Yeah.
Just want to make sure.
I made the cursor a little bit bigger so that you could see it. And this is ravine number two. So the elevation here is 35, well, this is the ravine itself. So this is 3528 down to 3452. So that's a 76-foot drop in this.
How much, I'm sorry, Jackie, 70 feet?
72 feet in the ravine.
From where it starts on state land, or from where it hits the mine?
Well, actually, where it kind of crosses.
All right, where it crosses.
Yeah, but it starts further up in state land.
And what is the distance of that drop, 72 feet over how many?
72 feet.
If you don't...
It's a small, it's not very long.
So I mean, what's the, what is the rate of fall? Is it like one foot every 20 feet or one foot every 50 feet?
And you, yeah.
I'm just going to type those contour in.
Yeah, these contours, because this is the, this is the top of the ravine, and this is the bottom. And then there's ravine here, ravine number two, and this is the edge of the property here, of the burrow pit that's been excavated. And this is, and it has two forks that's coming into the ravine right here, and then it flows down here. And that drop is 58. And then this is Ocotillo Road here, and the low point on Ocotillo Road is 3452, and right here is Desert Rose. Desert Rose is the low point for all of this area. All of this area has to drain.
So it's below 3452?
The road is correct. And so all of this...
Which is why I've seen the pictures, he has a pond there.
Correct.
Every time it rains.
And you would expect one to two feet in there. And so all of this area here has to flow to the San Pedro River. To do that, it has to cross Ocotillo Road. And to do that, this ravine here goes here, then it slightly turns, well, this ravine, ravine one, its discharge is that Desert Rose. That is an outlet. Ravine number two here, you can tell that the contour lines are slightly turning, so they are going north, and then they're turning west a little bit, and then they will combine and flow over Ocotillo Road. The distance from the area that's been disturbed on the, for Sierra Mine, is 800 feet to the property line, and it's about 1,000 feet to ravine number one. This is a drone that Dan did last month. There's Sierra Mining, that's the mining. This is the driveway that goes up to the mining. It's on the ridge of that road. This here is ravine number two. That's the hill, that's a hill, and this is ravine number one. This is Desert Rose, and that's Mr. Durham's house. All of this stormwater here, when it rains, has to flow over Ocotillo Road. And it here, so here it's spreading out. So it can change paths. I mean, you can see this is a path, that's a path, and when the county comes in here and they...
Grade the sand off.
The standoff that happens on the road, there'll be a berm, you know, like a one-foot berm from the sand. It will collect on the other side of that berm, and then, like here, you can tell that this, you know, it has to break through that berm to get, to keep flowing.
Mr. Chairman, Crosby has a question for Ms. Watkins.
Sure, go ahead, Tom.
Ms. Watkins, I understood from a March 12th email with you that it is not really the case that flooding on Ocotillo Road is caused by the mining operation. Is that correct, or did I misunderstand?
No, that's correct, and I have more slides that show that, too.
Okay, thank you. In other words, it's going to flood someplace, and whether there's mining operation or not, it's, the water's got to go someplace. That was the point that I was trying to make with Ms. Watkins. Thank you, Ms. Watkins.
Thank you. So this is the mine, Sierra Mining. This is the pit itself that's, and so they have this fork of the ravine number two, and this fork, and then they combined here. This edge here is about 800 feet from the property line, so there's been no disturbance here to adding the additional stormwater quantity to Ocotillo Road. And then here's from the south looking north, Mr. Durham's house is over here. This is ravine one here. This is Desert Rose. This is ravine two here, collects here, will flow over Ocotillo Road, and then this is the driveway that goes up to Sierra Mining. These were the photos from Mr. Durham showing the berms. So these are the, this is the berm, the concern he has with the berm. This is ravine number one. Here's ravine number one is my ravine number two. But this shows the ravines here, and this is a picture of the ravine, of the berm. This is the berm, the pit is over here. This is the berm. This is ravine number two, and this is the west fork of that ravine. This is the berm looking towards the east, and this is ravine two. All of this, when it rains, all the water, stormwater on this property naturally would flow into ravine two. So Sierra Mine had put up a berm, then it outlets here, but it still is flowing into ravine number two. This is the pit. This is the wash that goes down by the major wash that goes to the box culvert by Del Lago. And this, when it rains, everything on the south side of this ridge here at the pit will flow there. This is the top of this here. This water flows to the south. Everything that falls here would flow to the north to ravine one, or two, excuse me. So all of this drains into ravine two.
Except for that, that stays on the property, so it's a pit.
Yeah, so now, this is the pit. These are the contour lines. This flat area here, because you can see how the contours are spread out, this elevation here is 3550. The bottom of the pit is 3536. So this pit here is 14 feet deep. And this is inside the pit. So it's 14 feet deep from here up to the flat area over here. But on the ridges, this is 3606, this is the top of the hill. So whenever it rains, all the stormwater here is going to go into this pit.
And it goes nowhere else. It's a pit.
Yeah, it is contained. So from the top of this ridge here to the bottom, it's 30 feet. The 3578 is 42 feet. So it's, and the area itself, the bottom, the rim of the pit would be about 13 acres. The bottom is two acres. This is about two acres in here. So when it rains there, all of that stormwater is contained in that pit.
So somebody got a question? Kathleen, okay. Ms. Gomez, go ahead.
She needs to unmute herself.
There we go. My, when I was with Pat Schroeder and doing energy environment, I was at the Colorado School of Mines, and I was surprised when they said that when you move dirt and land around like this, there are situations where you're moving minerals, you're moving different types of, you know, I don't know, can't remember the term, but is there any concern that with the sand and the gravel and all of that, there's any kind of runoff that's kind of, you know, toxic or something that we should be aware of?
No, because it is the native material. I mean, if there's no more...
All of it is native?
No, this is all native. Yeah, all of this, when this was excavated out, so they excavated this out in the last 20 years to produce gravel. You can see this is like sand and gravel. So this material was removed and hauled offsite or stockpiled. There's still some stockpiles. That's what they're still hauling out today. So this was an excavated, so that if there was some type of chemical in here...
Like arsenic?
Natural arsenic and stuff.
Okay.
It's not going to increase or decrease it, because that would be already there.
And so when they take that, you take, they're taking, you say, the land, and they're taking it somewhere else, you know, what they excavate, where do they take it?
Well, mostly...
I'm sorry, go ahead.
A lot of this would probably go to roads, because aggregate base to build a road is dirt with rocks in it. And when we have the, well, we'll get that, if you're waiting for the weight limit on the road, I can explain some of that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have a question for either Ms. McLaughlin or Ms. Watkins.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, so I believe, I just wanted to make sure that I understood correctly from Ms. McLaughlin. It sounds like this is not a special use permit issued of the county. This is a mine subject to state regulations. Do I understand that correctly?
Yeah, my impression is it's either a mine, sand and gravel, or a burrow pit, and neither of which are within our zoning regulations. If it were to be a recycling center that is in our zoning regulations, then that would require a special use.
Okay, so what might potentially be recycled here?
Well, you're talking about the landscaping materials that's turned into mulch.
Yeah, well, if I go back to his original application, he said he wished to use the site as a recycling center focused on aggregates, biomass, electronic waste, needed for construction materials. That was the original, tied to the original rezoning request, which was withdrawn.
Okay, so there is no recycling issue here at all because that potential use was withdrawn?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, with regard to this biomass material and the potential of it being used for mulch. I, I understand that county staff went out there and looked at the biomass, is that correct?
Yep.
Okay, so did, I was on the city council when, it's my understanding and my observation that what is used for mulch in Sierra Vista is everybody's yard prunings, which are shredded and mixed with other biological material from the water treatment plant. Is, is that similar to what we have here? Or is what we, what we have here more like tree pruning junk? Or something like that? Is it, do you see anything where, oh, this is gonna be shredded, this is gonna be really turned into anything similar to what Sierra Vista produces? Or is it just more like tree prunings, sitting there as tree prunings?
Sierra Vista, they do take the green waste from the city so that they save landfill tipping fees. And they do grind that up and then mix it with the solids from the wastewater plant. And then they produced Class A compost. When they screen for the compost, the leftover material is mulch.
Okay, and that, in my observation, I haven't looked at it, but it seems like that is nothing like what is out there off of Ocotillo Road. Or almost nothing like it. You got some, you got some tree prunings or something like that, but the, but everything else about it is completely different from what occurs in Sierra Vista, where everybody recognizes, yeah, they're producing mulch in Sierra Vista. That's, that's not the way this looks like to me. What about you, Ms. Watkins?
This is like, yeah, this is like the mulch that, when they make their compost and they screen it.
All the branches.
Branches and the larger material is mulch, and that's what makes it mulch instead of compost.
It doesn't have the fine, so, so this is like all branches and plums and chunks of wood and.
And it's decaying, I mean, it's.
I mean, has it gone through a chipper? Has it gone through woodchipper, or is it big branches?
No, it's gone through some kind of a chipper.
So it's gone through something?
Yes, it's gone through something.
Okay, I didn't realize that. I thought it was just almost branches, like people pruned it off their trees.
You know, you can go like this.
Yeah, it's, so, so it, it went through a chipper shredder, and it's broken down into smaller, like, one to two-inch chunks.
I did not realize that, thank you for that information. That concludes my comments at this time.
Thanks.
So this is Desert Rose. This elevation on this contour line is 3,452, which is the bottom of ravine number one, and including ravine number two. So this is like a rim of a bowl. It has to cross Ocotillo Road to get to the river. And here, it has to fill up all of this area because the crown of the road is 3,452. So this whole area here will hold water until it gets deep enough
Right, I seen that picture. They showed me that picture, it's like two feet deep, it's got like a two-foot pond in this.
And after I got those photos from Mr. Durham, we did go out, because I'm not sure why they didn't have do not everyone flooded on the road, but this is, there's multiple locations on this road that has flooding over the road. And this is typical for any county road. Now, Front Hill Road is, you know, four miles long and has 26 step crossings on it. Now, there's, the majority of county roads have water flowing over across the road. That's county standard.
So are we to channel it so that it crosses, you know, like where we could put a culvert in to get it on the other side or something? Or something, some way to channel it to one spot instead of this big, huge pond?
You would have to press the road up three or four feet to be able to do that, because there's not a natural drainage channel here.
Oh, so you have to match the plane of the.
The contour of the.
Of the water.
Existing property, correct.
So you couldn't just dig a hole under the.
Not without a lot of massive earthwork. And then the outlet would be a concentrated point, so you'd be concentrating.
I'm thinking some kind of flood control stuff, like building berms and then putting a perp tube in to try to at least put some of the water into the ground somehow.
So just a little bit down the road from there, there is a big berm that been built, I don't know how long ago, but years ago, where they started doing that. This area does not have that, but that's, there's something to do with it.
And put it on each side so you protect the road and fill up those with, I don't know, I was thinking, you know, so.
It would be, you know, if you want to spend a million dollars.
Mr. Chairman, I have a, another comment that I'd like to discuss with Ms. Watkins.
Go for it.
Okay, in our, the previously discussed email that myself and Ms. Watkins exchanged, she says, according to the contour map that the flood control had done in 2020, this ravine is not impacted by any earth disturbing work done at the SMC gravel pit. And this is what I'm talking, what you're talking about now is Desert Rose and Ocotillo, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so as I, as I previously discussed, this was not impacted by any earth disturbing work done at the SMC gravel pit, so I just wanted to reiterate that.
At least not in the last 20 years.
That concludes my comments at this time.
Yeah, at least in the last 20 years.
So you can see the hills in the background here. So those hills drain to here, so all the water that's created, the stormwater created from here when it rains, has to cross Ocotillo Road.
So, so what, so what I'm understanding is there is a depression there? And then was it due to the fact that the road was built up?
No, it's just natural.
It's just, so there's just a natural depression there?
This is more sheet flow, so this isn't an area that, a lot of the, this area will flow into the wash that's west of Mr. Durham's house. Once it crosses Ocotillo Road, then it does make its way over there from the contour lines.
So that culvert that's further down, I saw it too.
Yeah, this doesn't flow to that.
Is there a way to get it to there?
No, that elevation of the, the high point on Ocotillo Road is 3,472, well, I can, so this is Ocotillo Road. This high point here is 3,472, the elevation. Desert Rose is 3,452, so you have a 20-foot drop on Ocotillo. And on the other side of this is the wash underneath Del Lago, by the Del Lago. But you can see how this, you, you, you know, the water is at the low point of the road. And to make, to increase the quantity of water flowing off of a property, the county does require pre and post, before development and after development, you have to retain the difference that was there before the development and after the developments. And we do, they do get floodplain use permits, and they do hydrology for commercial developments. As an example, when I worked for the city of Sierra Vista, I did the Sierra Vista Mall. Sierra Vista Mall is 52 acres. There was a certain amount of water that was flowing off the mall prior to development. And then with all the pavement and the buildings, there's an increase of water, stormwater, that's flowing off that property. So you have to detain the difference of that. And on the mall, it's about 52 acres, and their detention pond for that was 5.8 acres, which is two to, and two to four feet deep. So about 11% of their property was taken to detain the difference between what was there before development and after development. On this property, it's about 27 acres that have been disturbed from the property, or, no, it's 13 acres. And there's, well, there's 27 acres that were disturbed from the gravel pit or the mining, whenever they, you know, they started it. And 13 acres are retained by the pit itself, because that pit is so deep. So that's about 50%, so there's less water flowing off that property today than there would have been in 1980, prior to any development on the property. So it is retaining, and it's retaining it, not detaining it, because there's no outlet to that gravel pit.
I have another question for Ms. Watkins, and that is, what is, when did the resident with the flooded driveway move in there and start living there, if you know?
His parents, I think, have had that property for a while. But no, I mean, we could have that on.
Okay, so, so it's been decades, like perhaps back to the 80s or something like that, like you're talking about before that, before the gravel pit operated, before there was a pit there, for instance?
Possibly, yes.
Okay, so what I'm trying to determine is if that, it always flooded there, and there's, there's virtually no change in how much it floods over the last several decades? Is that what I understand?
The amount of stormwater coming off is due to rain. You know, we've been in a 20-year mega drought, so there could have been a higher intensity storm. Because you have your 10-year event, your 25-year event, your 50-year event. So each rainstorm produces a different amount. If you have one inch of rainfall in one hour, you're going to get a higher quantity of water flowing off than if you had a one-inch rain over 24 hours. Because over 24 hours, that's going to soak in. So if there was an intense microburst, you could have water flowing deeper than for the last 20 years, just because of depending on the rain. But yeah, I mean, the rains, the contour of the ravine number one and two has not changed by any activity on the gravel pit.
Yeah, that's not true.
And then, so by state statute, a person is not allowed to divert retard of strength of flow waters in any water course without secure and written authorization from the board of the district, which could be the flood control district. And a water course is defined by ADWR state standard. And a water course is when it has flow in that water course over 500 cubic feet per second. Coaches County has adopted that regulation in our regulatory flood, so we control any water course. It's either a FEMA designated floodplain or a water course that has over 500 cubic feet per second. These washes do not have over 500 cubic feet per second.
Okay, and thank you, Ms. Watkins. And I also understood that you say, that you said here that because of whatever random chance, because of this gravel pit being built the way it was and a pit being created that retains water, that it actually may have improved the, the situation of the amount of water that, that crosses Ocotillo Road. Did I understand that correctly?
Correct. The area that's being retained up there on the top of the hill is being retained, so that quantity of water is not flowing across Ocotillo.
Okay, so that's actually an improvement because of whatever is occurring at the gravel pit or mine, or whatever it might be called?
Correct.
Is that correct? Okay, thank you.
So if stormwater is less than the regulatory flood, the county doesn't get involved, it is a civil matter between the property owners. And that's why, but a landowner can, I mean, a property owner can do landscapes, they can divert and change the water on their property, as long as that, when it leaves their property, it's leaving at the same location it was before they started anything. And being that all the drainage from the area that's been cleared for the materials pit is flowing into ravine number two, and that's 800 feet from the end of their property line, by the time it gets to the property line, it continues to flow on Mayberry and Durham's properties, it's back to what it's been flowing for the last, when earth was created.
Okay, so Ms. Watkins, so we haven't started to talk about actions from Mr. Scott's property to Mr. Durham's property, is that correct? We haven't started to talk about that, are we going to?
That's next, that's the next slide.
Okay, getting ahead again, sorry about that. That concludes my remarks at this time, thank you.
So the conclusion is that no water has been diverted out of its original natural path as an excess property. The berms along the north and edge property of the pit itself is not diverting water out of, into a different flow path, it's still flowing into ravine number two. And as we stated, the area is being detained from the stormwater because of the pit itself. Concern number five is that the ravine that was modified is less than 500 CFS from Mr. Scott and Mr. Durham's property. So that is a civil matter between the neighbors. And I explained that to Mr. Durham in my emails in November. But after we met out there on March 20th with Mr. Shane to look at the stuff on, on the materials pit, we then did go over to Mr. Scott's property, and Mr. Rash was there, and I explained to them that what they were doing on private property, you know, they had to get Mr. Scott's, or Mr. Durham's approval. And so they have contacted each other. I do know in June, Mr. Durham had sent me emails or texts, screenshots of the text message between him and Mr. Rash. Mr. what Mr. Scott did dump stuff, had caused to dump stuff into the ravine that's head cutting on Mr. Durham's property. But it is a civil matter between those two. I do have an email between the two, between Mr. Scott and Mr. Durham, and they are working it out, that they are getting together to correct that issue.
So I got an email from Mr. Scott. He basically said he wanted to let me know that he's met with Mr. Durham. And I wanted, but he, who, you know, raised the issue to us, says that he is going to fix it, is what he says here. And he says, I think, you know, he's willing to be cooperative, and he believes Mr. Durham is willing to be cooperative. So as far as from, he is concerned, he will work with Mr. Durham to resolve the issue as best he can to his satisfaction. That's what he's telling.
Yeah, so they're working it out.
So, again, so, but the county has no oversight over what they do.
Correct.
So whatever, Mr. Scott hires Roust to come in with his equipment and tries to move everything around, it's gotta be an agreement between him and Durham on what the outcome of that is.
Yes.
So they don't have to file, like, for permits or nothing?
No, because that's a head cut. If they were doing anything in the wash itself that goes to that box culvert, they would. But it's, it's a head cut, it's a side shoot. So this, so this is the wash that we're talking now. This is on the, that's Mr. Durham's house. This is the wash west of his house. And this is highly erodable material. You know, St. David Benson has class, some of Class A soil, not meaning A isn't good. And so this is, this is upstream of that wash. And you can see how this is eroded. This is head cutting, and head cutting is, it starts down at whatever the elevation is of the wash and works backwards. And you can see all these head cuts. And this, this is state leased land, and it's private property that's further south of Mr. Durham's house. But this is, this is the area, so we do have massive erosion in that area.
And it's just natural.
That's just natural. Flood control district doesn't go in there and fix any of this, it's private property. If the property owner wants to fix it, they can. But it would be nothing that flood control district would do. And this is all over, especially in the St. David area. That's why you have so much sand, silt, you know, sediment that happens on Ocotillo Road is because of the erosion of material that's upstream. And we're in a drought, so you're getting higher erosion and stuff when you do have intense storms. And the other concern was the weight limit on Ocotillo Road for a 12-ton limit. 40-ton is the weight limit on public roads in Arizona. So if there's not a sign on the road, then the weight limit is 40 tons. And that's just by state statute. I think it's 28, 1,100, that that is state. So all the, all the public roads in Arizona, 40-ton weight limit, that's just what we have. So the weight limit on Ocotillo Road is 40-ton as of August 30th, 2005. There was an agreement with the owner of that property at that time, which was a chuka concrete, that they would provide the county 20,000 tons of AV. that they would provide the county twenty thousand tons of AB and twenty-four hundred tons of three-eight chips to construct. And then that property would construct an acceleration lane, an return lane on Ocatillo Road, which they did. And then the county was to increase the depth of AB underneath Ocatillo and widen it to twenty-eight feet. So the first mile and a half on Ocatillo is widened. It does have a two-foot shoulder. And they, the county did receive all that material from, which is concrete. They did not use it on Ocatillo Road. This was around the year two thousand and eight, when the recession was starting. And so, just me speculating, that with the recession starting, we had the decrease in her funds. We went from like eleven and a half million a year down to six and a half million in two thousand and twelve, and then back up, now we're about eleven million now. And so we didn't have the funds to do chip seal. So all those material, because Chuka Concrete had the material there in Sierra Vista. And we did get the AB, so they did fulfill their requirement. But we used those, those chips and AB on roads around Sierra Vista.
So what, what's the plan scheduled for moving that road?
So it was less chip sealed in two thousand and twenty-two. It's due again for chip seal in two thousand and twenty-nine to two thousand and thirty-two.
But it will be a chip seal road. It's not going to be an asphalt road.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, just as a comparison, you know, we're in the design phase of Molson Road. You know, it's seven-point-eight miles, about the same length as this. The design cost, it's one-point-eight million. And that will be a, you know, we'll have paved shoulders and asphalt, update all the.
That's coming with a state grant.
Yeah, we only have three millions. The construction cost is fifty million. So it will take twenty-five or fifty years to even do Molson Road. We don't have that. We'll just spit, pick, spot locations that we can do. But the county, we have six-hundred-and-ninety-five miles of paved road. Of those, eighty-four mile or asphalt road. And all the rest of the roads in the county are chip sealed. So they are chip sealed roads. So if you took the cost per mile that's happening on Molson Road, and you applied it to the rest of the county chip seal roads to upgrade all of our roads to that standard, which would be, in an ideal world, what I would love to do, would be over three billion dollars, billion. That's an impossibility, it will never happen. So our standard is chip sealed. I mean, that's what we can economically construct. And the weight limit, when you put them on, it, it traffic counts, how many traffic, the traffic on the road. You know, Molson Road is four thousand traffic. Ocatillo's about a thousand. Impact of the other users of the road. And this is the county standard. This is two twelve-foot lanes. And so a twelve-foot lane is a standard for all public roads. Your freeways, your highways are twelve-foot lanes. It does have a shoulder, six-foot shoulder, but it's not paved. Our standard is DBST, which is double by two-mid surface treatment. That's a chip seal road, just has two layers of it. Over six inches of AB. Not all of our roads even have six inches of AB. Show and tell, but. So this is what the oil is. So chip seal road itself, it's just you spread oil. You put in high-volume chips, so that's what the chips look like. You spread oil, you put these chips, you slightly rub it off, you spread oil again, and then you can fit the low-volume chips. So that's what, that's, that's the material that they're, and then you put it over AB. And AB is dirt with rocks, and that's what the AB is. So our roads are built then, and that's what Ocatillo Road is built to. And this is Ocatillo Road, that has the two twelve-foot lanes. It does have striping. And the striping is per MUTCD. And by MUTCD, we would, which is the National Federal Highways Manual for Product Control Device, right? So we wouldn't even have to mark this road. Unless you have three thousand cars a day, you're not required to put lane markings. You can put lane markings on anything that's over forty-five miles now. This is posted at forty-five, just for safety. So it does show the two-foot-twelve foot lanes. Has our shoulders, they're not paved, but they are, they do have shoulders. That is the shoulders. And this is common throughout Cochise County. And here is on Ocatillo Road, and you can see the sediment that happens here. We had put in a concrete curving here, just because so much sediment comes across this road at this point. This frequently gets.
Do they clear it out on the other side? Or how do you keep it from building up and just overflowing?
We clear it out, yeah. The grader goes in and cleans it out.
Two or three days later.
Yeah, it takes time, because when it, you know, when it rains and we have sediment, the priority is to do the higher volume roads. And, you know, you don't have enough staff to go clean all the roads. In fact, we have a lot of roads that are closed for a day or two because of sediment. And it's not unique to Cochise County. This is state highways in Cochise County. You can see this is Highway Eight, one ninety-one, one eighty-one. But it's, you know, two twelve-foot lanes, no paved shoulders. It's just, you know, it doesn't, it's clear to vegetation, of trees. But that is common. These are other roads, and so all these have forty-ton weight limits. This is Central Highway. This is Palominas Road. This is Washington Avenue and Douglas. And Central Highway, Washington, Palominas, Rob's Road. Those are roads that have been reconstructed in the last ten years. And they are chip sealed road, double or triple layers of trips, chip seal over AB. And have forty-ton weight limits. And this is in Washington and outside of Washington. Washington, Maddoxum is the contractor that has the concrete plant. And so they do use this road for all of the material they're hauling from Geronimo Trail to their concrete plant. So this is common. Kansas Salma, Rob's is, you know, the farmers and ranchers out here. And all of their vehicles for the farming are over, or forty tons. Could be over, we don't have scales. And this is an example of trucks that would be better above the twelve-ton load limit. An empty concrete ton truck is ten to twelve tons, full of concrete. You know, ten yards of concrete weighs twenty tons. So if you have a, if you're building a house, you own a concrete truck and.
With nine yards of concrete.
Yeah, you're going to be over twenty-ten, or twelve tons. You know, semi-load of hay is.
So what's the waiver for those guys? Is there a waiver for those guys?
No, because this is forty tons.
No, I mean, so, so like, I get concrete, I get concrete from Clunk, right, where I'm at? And I had two.
They're forty tons, so they're, that's a legal limit.
With, with, with nine yards of concrete in them?
Yeah. Yeah, they won't be over forty tons. The truck itself, fully loaded, is forty tons.
Oh, okay, okay.
And the hay, you know, when you ship hay, it's forty tons. I mean, that truck is carrying, with, with the weight of the truck and the hay, it's forty tons.
Hey exempt.
And they're not exempt. Ag is not exempt from.
Weight limits.
From a weight limit, right. None, none of these vehicles are exempt. I'm a hay farmer, I do know this.
Okay, I got you. I, I'm just, I'm just trying to learn myself, this is for my.
Or if you have a truck, a cattle truck coming in to get cows, all of this is forty tons. All of these drivers will have to have a CDL license.
Right, because they're over twenty-six thousand.
You know, your garbage truck, if you're hiring gravel to, you know, pave your road. And I mean, weight limit is the control of the board of supervisors. But all of our county roads are chip sealed. Majority of our county roads are chip sealed. And somehow fifteen-ton load limits on it for through traffic. Kansas Salma doesn't sell district good. But you don't want to inhibit the farmers or the, you know, the businesses that are going on there.
So would you know what's downstream on Ocatillo Road with regard to using that road for, it's just ranches and farms?
Oh, further north? Yeah, there's two, there's farmers up there, there's pivots.
I mean, so they, they would exceed the twelve-ton?
They would exceed the twelve-ton, correct. Anyone that wanted to build a house.
To put a cement truck back there.
Put a concrete truck in there, correct.
Mr. Chair, I have another question for Ms. Watkins.
Sure, sure, go ahead.
Ms. Watkins, I think a little while ago, you were talking about billions of dollars in costs that were prohibited. And I was probably scribbling about something else. Did you have a slide for that? And you could, could you reiterate what you said? Because I was not completely focused on it.
Now, that was just as a comparison of what we're doing on Molson Road. You know, Molson Road, we designed it to what ultimately we would like to have out on that road, because it has a traffic count of four thousand. But during the design, because we're about a thirty percent design, and the cost to do that seven-point-eight miles and put in bridges and culverts to take the water underneath the road would be over fifty million. So that's about six and a half million dollars per mile to do that road. And that would be cost prohibitive to do that type of ideal pavement of asphalt and culverts for all of the six-hundred-and-ten miles of chip seal roads that the county has. You know, well, the county will never, ever have four billion, or three billion dollars to do roads.
Right.
And so that's why, that's why our standard is chip sealed.
Okay, I understand that. And I appreciate your reiterating that for me. And so, Mr. Chair, I, I went back when we were, I, we were talking about maybe Truman Road or Presidential Estates out there somewhere. And that there was a, a group of people out there that wanted their road improved. And so what I was talking about at that time was, it's like you only have to, have to go out there and maintain a road once, and it becomes a county maintained road. So I don't know if we can come up with anything that, that would resemble a lottery for some roads to be improved with the understanding was, with, with the understanding that the county is not coming back to, to maintain or improve this forever and ever. And it would, that would devolve to the residents out there to maintain whatever we might create on a one-time basis, like a lottery. Just an idea.
So I talked to Joe a little bit about this, and him and Mr. Fazio are turning some stuff together. One of the things we talked about was road improvement districts, where the people, if they want, they can gather the signatures and have a vote on it and establish a, a road improvement district in, in that particular area. And then maybe there was an agreement where the county would come in and do the one sort of layer of chip seal. But then after that, they had to use the road improvement district funds to maintain the road from that point on, or something like that. We were kicking, just spitballing ideas about how to do that. But that doesn't apply here, because Ocatillo Road is a county road. So I was, I'm just trying to look at a way to defer, and it's sounding very expensive, but to divert floodwater or to elevate that area that's a depression to not create a pond every time it rains. But that sounds just, again, also expensive to, to fix that. I'm just trying to think of ways to remedy it, but anyway.
Perhaps what I'm talking about might apply to Desert Rose, which was the road that we saw.
Yeah, that's just the small, I think it's more like a driveway than a road. Not too many people use it, so I think he's the only guy that does use it, right? So.
Yeah, because this is Ocatillo Road. And this is, you know, Ocatillo Road itself has a major crossing that's in between this.
Yeah, the road is between the hills and the river, right? So that's what, that's what we're dealing with. We're dealing with a, water's got to get from one side to the other. And when they put the road in, they didn't culvert or elevate the road to create a flow. They just said, well, we'll just suck it up, you know, eight, nine times a year when it floods, when monsoons hit. And then the rest of the year, it's dry.
This road was done before nineteen thirty-seven. It's on the maps from nineteen thirty-seven.
Right, that's, yeah.
Yeah.
So back then, it was just a bulldozer running through there.
Most of our roads are not really designed.
They're just like.
Just there that we inherited before statehood, something.
So that's the, the end of the presentation. You have any questions?
All right, what we're going to probably do is I'm going to just meet with these guys again, and then maybe have one more public meeting. And that'll be probably the end of it there. And then we'll take it from there. But I appreciate you putting it together, a lot of data here. And I'm going to, I'll go back out there and take a look at it again as well. But I appreciate you putting the manpower and the hours into doing it. I mean, we'll have to look at it. I'll talk with the, the folks out there, and we'll see where we go from there. Probably just set something up later on to, to have more opportunity for them to make comments based on what you presented today. And that's, that's all I got. The, Mr. Gomez, or Mr. Gomez, Mr. Crosby, do you have any other comments?
Only that your points are well-taken. And I also thank Ms. Watkins, Ms. McLaughlin, and Mr. Casey for their assistance and comments and answering questions today.
And then Ms. Gomez, you got anything?
Uh, no, just thank you for all the work that you did on this issue. It's, it's pretty interesting.
All right, it's a problem we're dealing with all over the county.
It's like Mr. Crey, it's not his name.
Who does?
Paul Crey.
Oh, he's got a comment? Oh, I didn't even know he was Mr. Crey.
I'm out here in outer space. No, I just wanted to, I think this is a good time to point out. They filed or sent a notice of claim dated September twenty-fourth.
I can't hear you, sir. Can you speak up a little? I'm having a hard time hearing you, Paul.
Yeah, they sent a notice of claim September twenty-fourth last year. And after a hundred and eighty days under statute, that's being denied. So that's out there. We didn't tender it to ACIP, but, you know, under the statute, didn't accept it in time. So that's, if they want to sue that, they could, that's what.
All right. Yeah, the next meeting? All right, so the next meeting is going to be a budget work session tomorrow. Oh, not tomorrow, I'm sorry. Monday, April fourteenth, at ten AM in the hearing room to discuss the county budget for the fiscal year. With that, we're adjourned.